We'll start with the vocal call. Felix Tachecko.
Here.
Dale Lakers. Suzanne Ludwig.
Here.
Crystal Letella.
Here.
Ryan Berger.
Here.
John Petrolino. George Shadig. Manuel Hestaneda.
Here.
Bob Cardika.
Here.
Jeff Crum.
Here.
Thank you. Can we have a public announcement, please? Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been conflagrated and satisfied and that the annual notice, which case the official notice at the time, place, and conduct of all meetings of the City of New Brunswick Planning Board have been filed with the City Clerk and placed on an appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, 78 Bayards Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and have been transmitted to the official newspapers of the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune and Starlight. We're going to stand this meeting right here. You might want to be...
...to testify for the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one issue, one regard, individuals with a routine justice.
It's the minutes from the October 7th, 2019 meeting. A little bit less. I'll second. He's calling later. Close?
Upstanding.
Standing by, so I'm standing. Resolutions for memorialization?
We have none.
None? Very good. All right, we move into the public hearings. Our first applicant tonight is PAL Associates LLC. His application number is BP-2019-07. It's a variance application for the installation of signage related to the existing industrial and company plumbing supply business and installation of two refuse enclosures located at 10 Industrial Drive. This is block 597.01, lot 9.01.
Good evening, board members. First of all, thank you. Stephen Hale, representing PAL and Aaron Company and Council. The council wants to talk first.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I have a conflict with this application. I have, in fact, represented Aaron and PAL in the past. Our firm does not currently represent them. However, it was approximately a year ago, I'd say, out of an abundance of caution. I believe it's best to recuse myself. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have asked for conflict counsel to sit in on this application. Mr. Tom Abode is present. So with your permission, if I may step off the dais, if you'll excuse me, I will recuse myself and Mr. Abode, who does not have a conflict, can step in as the board's attorney and provide legal advice on this application, should it be necessary.
Great. Any questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Great, thanks. I'll start again. Stephen Hale, representing the Pal Associates, related company Aaron Company. Appreciate everyone, staff and the board coming out on such a beautiful night here. This is an application for PAL Associates, which is a land holding company for Aaron Company. Aaron Company is a commercial plumbing supply kitchen materials company. They've been in New Brunswick for 40 years and what they're looking to do here is to... They definitely have a fairly simple application. They have very productive TRC with your professionals and your board. And what they're looking to do here is to upgrade some of the signage, better identification of the building. And then when we were discussing the site plan, also upgrade and have better areas for the dumpsters that are on the site. There's essentially no change, you'll hear testimony from my client, no change in the operation of the facility, no change in the locations of the entrances, the entrances, again, the signage. Because we require some variances for that signage before the board, and we figured, again, as long as we're doing that, based upon suggestions from your professionals, we wanted to put the dumpsters into enclosures. We also are removing, there's some older signage that are on the fences, that's being removed, and then the barbed wire is also being removed on the fences. So that's a brief overview of the application. We're planning on presenting three witnesses, may I have our professional engineer to give the board an overview of the layout of the site, then have our representative or client talk a little bit about Aaron Company and PAL Associates, and then some brief testimonies from our professional planner to justify the variances associated with the application. So if there's no preliminary questions from board, I'd like to call upon our first witness, Jalena Lorada Varone.
Could you please say your name, spell your last name?
Jalena Lorada Varone, this is B-A-L-O-R-D-A hyphen B-A-R-O-U.
After the hyphen, can you repeat?
B-A-R-O-U.
B-A-R-O. Do you swear or affirm the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
You may proceed.
Mr. Varone, if you could please give the board, first, the benefit of your work, educational experience, area of expertise, license as you hold, and whether you've been qualified as an expert in the field of professional engineering in the past.
Yes. I'm currently a senior project manager and a senior associate at Mazor Consulting. I have about 22 years of experience in land development, and I am currently a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and my license is current. I have testified before numerous boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I have not been in New Brunswick before, but the nearest towns would be North Brunswick and East Brunswick as well. Just ten more seconds, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. All right, Ms. Varone, if you could, you've heard my opening statement, obviously well familiar with the site. If you could give the board an overview of the existing conditions and then what's proposed by way of the modification of the signage and the dumpsters.
Sure. I have prepared an exhibit which I could title A1.
By the way, we've had some technical issues with our easel there. We can't get it to go up any higher.
This is as good as it's going to get. I will title this A1. It's titled "Aerial Exhibit for Aaron &amp; Company." It's an aerial photograph with the subject site outlined in red. It's prepared by Mazor Consulting, dated November 18th, 2019. We're here in front of you tonight for a minor site plan application for the subject site known as block 597.01, lot 9.01. The site is located at an intersection of Terminal Road and Industrial Drive. It's an existing developed site which contains one structure that's being utilized by Aaron &amp; Company as well as Plant Parenthood. As you can see from this aerial photograph, the site is surrounded by other industrial uses. The site access is currently off of Terminal Road, and then there's also a driveway over Industrial Drive. As part of this development application, we're not proposing any changes to the site access or to the building itself. As Mr. Hale described, that there was a meeting beforehand, and we're here in front of you to address new proposed signage for the project, as well as the construction of two new refuse enclosures. Right now, I'm going to show exhibit A2, which is sheet two of the submitted site plan, again, prepared by Mazor Consulting. It's sheet two of two, titled Dimension Plan. This exhibit shows the details of the site, and I would like to do now is take you through where the proposed signs are going to be located. So along Terminal Road, there is a parking lot that serves an entrance to a showroom. Currently, there is no signage along this elevation. So the client is proposing to put an entrance awning sign and a window sign. The details of the signs were submitted, and you will see them a little bit later. Our planner has a handout, so you can see and follow easier, but I'm just going to do a quick summary. So there's signs proposed along there. Also on Terminal Road, there is an existing facade sign that's supposed to be replaced. This sign will not be illuminated. There is also a proposed new parts counter and plumbing AC sign above the awning sign that's going to be at this counter. This sign is an awning sign that you'll see. Then there is also proposed signage on Industrial Drive. Currently, there is an existing Aaron &amp; Company sign that will be replaced with a new facade sign. This sign will be internally illuminated. The Plant Parenthood portion of this building will not have any changes to their sign. There are two building signs on that building, and there will be no change to those signs. There are currently also two freestanding signs. One is for Aaron Kitchen and Bath, which is located at the intersection, and then one is for Plant Parenthood, which is located over here. Both of those signs are to remain as they are, and I also wanted to point out that both of those signs are outside of any sight lines, so they do not fall within conflict. As I noted earlier, we're also proposing two trash enclosures. Currently, the dumpsters are not enclosed, they're just loose on the site. There are two dumpsters currently located in the southern location. We are proposing a 9x20 enclosure with chain link fence with slats. And then also on the northern portion of the site, we are proposing another enclosure to house two dumpsters. This enclosure will be located in place of two parking spaces, but there is currently sufficient parking on the site. We do need some relief from your ordinance for not proposing landscaping around those enclosures. Your ordinance does require a solid wall and evergreens. However, given that this is an industrial area, we believe that proposing a chain link fence with slats would be adequately screening the dumpsters and meeting the intent of the ordinance. Due to the site uses, this area is also not ideal for plantings and the creation of new islands. This would be also an improvement to the existing conditions, being that these enclosures will house the dumpsters and they will no longer be loose in the parking and maneuvering areas. We also note that there was no objection to this relief from your planner. We were also asked to run a truck turning sample to check for the maneuvering, specifically on this side, on the Industrial Drive side, which we did provide on the plan and ensure that there is adequate maneuvering. I did want to also address that when this enclosure is opened, that it would be in the way of a parking spot. But I do want to note that trash pickup occurs at 6:00 a.m. by a private hauler, and that Plant Parenthood, which is the one facility that's using this parking lot, doesn't open until 9:00 a.m. on that day, so they're shooting on conflict with that. I also wanted to note that there is some medical waste that Plant Parenthood has picked up, but that waste is stored inside of the building and will not be in those exterior enclosures. I also wanted to reiterate that we will remove the existing signs as catch to the fence, and that the barbed wire on the fence will be removed as well. We did receive the planning report and the engineer's report, and just a couple of points that I wanted to address on those reports. There was a comment regarding providing an ADA and pro-life certification. We felt that this would not be necessary, being that our scope is limited to the signs and the dumpsters, so that my testimony should be hopefully sufficient. As far as lighting, there is currently site lighting, it's all building mounted lighting. There was also a request to add a note about the inspection and the cleaning of the catch basins and pipes, which we will comply with. Will add a note to the plan. There's also a request to provide asphalt after construction, we're also going to comply with that. And then there was also a request for outside approvals or exemptions for Middlesex County and Freehold Conservation District. Again, being that the scope of work is that would not trigger the county approval or the Freehold Souls Conservation District jurisdiction, we would prefer to just testify to that and not request those exemptions. Our disturbance is less than 5,000 square feet, it's approximately 500 square feet of disturbance only, and we're not affecting the county or any laser drainage with this proposal.
And you've otherwise had not been, as you noted, to review both the planning and the engineering report, and have no problem otherwise complying with any of those terms and conditions?
No, I do not.
I have no further questions of Ms. Varone at this time.
Any questions? No, thank you for your testimony.
I'd now like to call upon Mr. Chad Waltman, representative from Aaron Company and PAL.
Say your name, spell your last name. M-A-N?
Correct.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You may proceed.
Give me everyone.
Yep. Just introduce yourself and tell a little bit about your position with Aaron Company and PAL.
Chad Waltman, and I've been with Aaron Company for 25 years. I'm the director of branch operations. Started with the company in different aspects. I was a branch manager of four locations, New Brunswick being one of them. Very familiar with their operations.
And I indicated my opening about PAL and Aaron being in New Brunswick for 40 years. Tell a little bit about the history of Aaron and PAL at this location and generally what goes on there.
Well, PAL owns the real estate, and Aaron Company is the plumbing, heating, and air conditioning supplier. We incorporated in 1932. This is our 87th year in New Brunswick, and in this particular location at 10 Industrial Drive for 40 years.
And I indicated also that there's no changes in the operation of either your company or Plant Parenthood as related to this?
No, not at all, it's signage.
Okay. And tell us a little bit about why you're looking to upgrade the signage.
Well, we have three entrances into the building. One is for pickup and bulk delivery. We have a trade counter parts area that leads to our inside sales for that end of the business. We have an upscale showroom, and the clientele are different for each of these locations. It was our intent to distinguish them by branding and setting them for our clientele to distinguish between them. We have a small industrial park, our neighbors are Newville Waste, Ryder Truck Rental, Colgate Paper, residential planning, as I said earlier, and we're being aesthetic approved to revitalize our site and to provide branding for our product.
And then, as indicated, there's no changes with the signage for Plant Parenthood, correct?
Not at all.
Okay. And as Ms. Varone testified, this is also an opportunity to have specific areas for the refuse?
Yeah, we're going to enclose the dumpsters for both areas, in the 20x9 foot enclosures. And as they've stated earlier, for both Plant Parenthood and Aaron, and the only other waste is medical waste that Plant Parenthood has in any side of their building.
And these are all done by private haulers?
Done by Secoudas Brothers and Newville Waste. We were talking about the slats, the green slats in the building, through the chain link, so you can't see through it.
And you're also committed to remove the barbed wire fence and the signage on the fencing?
Yes.
And from an operational and ownership standpoint, have any problems complying with any of the terms, conditions outlined by the planning review and the engineering review from the city?
Yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Thanks. And now I'd like to call upon our professional planner, Marcia Schiffman.
Please say your names, spell your last name.
My name is Marcia Schiffman, S-H-I-F-F-M-A-N.
Do you swear or affirm the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You may proceed.
Schiffman, if you could, as Ms. Varone did, give the board the benefit of your work, educational experience, area of expertise, and license as you hold, and whether you've been accepted in the board's support in the state of New Jersey as a professional planner.
Certainly will. I'm landscape architect by training in the University of Michigan. I've worked in New Jersey since 1979, originally as municipal planner. I have planning certification license since 1981, American Institute of Certified Planners certification since 1985, and licensed landscape architect. I have testified before numerous, probably hundreds of boards, or worked with various municipalities in New Jersey primarily, but in the tri-state area, also counties and state.
Your credentials are excellent, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I have testified in New Brunswick before the zoning board twice that I remember. It's quite a while ago.
Great, thank you. And I know we're here for a minor site plan related to signage and obviously the relocation or enclosure of the dumpsters, but if you could please provide planning justification for the variances associated with this submission?
Absolutely. Sort of repeat, some of the testimony that was given by the engineer, just to set the stage for the variances. You have the site, which is on the northeast corner of Industrial Drive and Terminal Road in the I-2 general industrial zone, and it's surrounded by industrial properties. Republic Services, which is a waste management transfer station to the north and to on the other side of the street, Ryder Transportation across the street, and Colgate Recycling Paper Facility on the other side of Terminal Road. The site itself is 3.3 acres, and it's a corner lot, which I think is important to note as part of the variances that are being requested for different signage, facade signage. So it has two facades on two streets. It currently is almost 56,000 square foot building, one story, built in 1978, and it was expanded in 1988. We received a copy of the resolution from your planning director, which approved a front carriage setback variance along one road, a 25-foot front road setback variance. The building has three tenants. The largest tenant is Aaron &amp; Company, which has a parts counter, warehousing, and does pickup and delivery. And that's 40, almost 47,000 square feet. It's this big building in the back here. And you have in the front of it, Aaron Kitchen and Bath Design Gallery showroom, which is 6,900 square feet. And then finally, Plant Parenthood has a smaller building fronting on Industrial Drive of 2,100 square feet. So it is a minor site plan application. We're going to provide testimony regarding awning signs, facade signs, freestanding signs, and the trash dumpster enclosure area. And highlight, there are some pre-existing non-conforming conditions that I'll also highlight. So I did prepare an exhibit which I thought to pass out, because I thought it would be useful, make it easier to understand what's being proposed.
And I think we're up to A3.
A3. So the exhibit is photos of the site, some I've taken, some were taken by the, I think the, I think Crawford, by Chad. Thank you. And there's also the design sheets from the sign company. So I've numbered the pages, and I'd like to go through them, I think you'll make it easier. So the first page, which is page one, does everybody? Okay, page one. This is the entrance to Aaron Kitchen and Bath Design Gallery. As you can see, there's basically no signage there. There is a wall, there's a ramp, and a canopy over the doorway, and there are two windows to the right of the door. So that's the existing condition.
And by the way, Marcia, if you could just, for identification on the record, this exhibit was remarked as one exhibit, is in fact 13 pages, and you're going to then refer for the record.
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. Varone.
Yes, 13 pages, exhibit A3. I did put it together. Okay, so that's page one. Page two is the other page. That shows the awnings that are proposed on that wall entering the design gallery. And they're very simple, classic, black, umbrella fabric awnings. There's, the awnings themselves are black. There is a lighting underneath the awning, it's LED lighting, and it shines down. It's not shining into the fabric to highlight the fabric, but shining down under the awning. Awnings, signs on awnings are not permitted in the I-2 general industrial zone. So requesting a variance for signs on the awnings. There are three awnings proposed in front for the kitchen gallery, kitchen bath gallery, design gallery. There's one awning proposed, and another for the parts counter, which I'll go into, but it does not have signage on it. So this is the sign on page two of front of the door, over the door, and that requires variances. First of all, awning signs are not permitted, and signs themselves on an awning have certain requirements. On the shed face, the flat face, on an angle of the awning, permit up to four square feet sign. Graphic sign, this is 3.99 square feet, so it conforms. However, it does include text, and your ordinance talks about a sign that includes graphics, but not specific text. I would argue, or state, that although it includes the name of the Aaron Kitchen and Bath Design Gallery, it's all sort of a logo, and in fact, it's very similar to the freestanding sign that we're talking about later. So this graphic, which is their name, is on the sign, and then there are, so it would require a variance for that. Turning to page three, there are two smaller black awnings over the windows. Again, signs are not permitted in the I-2 zone on awnings. If this was not in the I-2 zone, as a permitted graphic on an awning, there are limitations, and this sign does comply with the limitations. There are limitations on the size of the graphics on the balance panel, the flat face panel, which allow up to 16-inch letters, and this high letters, and here the letters are less than eight inches, they're 7.47 inch high letters. So the letters are consistent with what would be permitted on an awning. Again, these have lights beneath them, LED lights, but the lights are shining down, so a variance would not be needed for the illumination on these awnings. So looking at these awnings, and looking at sheet number one, which was the existing entrance, I think it really shows how the building will be improved by these awnings. It will improve the, first of all, identify the entry, where this showroom is, and make it much more attractive, so it has very positive benefits, in my opinion. There are, turning to page four, you see a picture of continuing, it's the wall of the building here. I'm pointing to exhibit A1, and it just shows this facade of the building. And this is where the warehouse is, it's the entry to the parts counter, and then there's loading areas and storage. And that has a door with a metal canopy over it, and then there is an Aaron &amp; Company sign above it. So what is proposed? Proposed is, if you look at page five, really an upgrade of that entrance, and also an identification of that entrance for customers coming to that site, that facility, because there's really no good signage there now. They're proposing an awning, but that awning has no graphics, so it would be an approved awning. They're proposing a sign, Aaron &amp; Company sign, and they're proposing... They're proposing a sign, Aaron &amp; Company sign, and they're proposing a sign above the awning, which says parts counter plumbing area. So if you turn to page six, that includes, that shows the first, and there will be first facade sign that we're improving. And what was there now, if you recall and went back to page four, there is just one simple sign that says Aaron &amp; Company. That sign is approximately 84.6 square feet in size. The sign that's being proposed on page six, which is Aaron &amp; Company, and then a band which says distributors of plumbing, heating, and cooling products since 1932, that sign in total is slightly smaller than the existing sign. It's 83.7 square feet. That sign is illuminated, it has lighted channel boards, and so it's smaller than the existing sign. And in your code, a facade sign for this building of this size can be 100 square feet in size, so it's less than 100 square feet. And it's a replacement sign. And it shows the new branding logo of Aaron &amp; Company. There is one other sign, which is the parts counter sign, and if you turn to page seven, there is the information on that sign. That sign is not lighted, it is just router cut letters that are on the wall, and total square footage of that parts counter plumbing HVAC sign is totals 8.88, so nine square feet. Taken together, both signs on that wall are less than 100 square feet. They total 92.58 square feet, so it's less than what would be, what had been permitted for that facade. Turning to page eight, this is the facade along Industrial Drive, and it's really this corner right here. How to describe it? It's you go into the parking lot where Planned Parenthood is, the driveway off Industrial Drive, and you see that sign. Also, I will just note that below the sign are dumpsters, and that air, that's going to be replaced. So that sign is being replaced. The existing sign is 120 square feet in area, and it's going to be replaced, if you turn to page nine, with a new logo. It's a sign, same size, different letters showing the new branding of the company name. So this sign is more than 100 square feet. It's an existing sign. It replaces an existing sign of that size, but it exceeds the 100 square foot maximum, so a variance would be required. And I would just note that the wall is very large, the existing sign is not overpowering on the wall, so in my professional opinion, I don't think it's overpowering to replace the sign and grant the variance for that. There are two other facade signs, so we are allowed one facade sign per building. We already have two. It is a corner lot fronting on two facades, which I think provides the rationale for granting more signs, facade signs. There are two other existing signs which I want to know. One is the, on page 10, they're two Planned Parenthood signs. One is at the front of the building, this is basically parallel with Industrial Drive. And the other sign on page 11, also a Planned Parenthood sign, it's fronting on, like north-facing wall, fronting on a parking, on a parking lot. So those are existing signs which we would like to retain. It is a separate use on the property. The first Planned Parenthood sign by the front door, which was on page 10, is only eight square foot in size, and the one on page 11 is 14 square feet in size. The signs are not lit, they're just painted boards, painted boards. So that would require a variance for number freestanding, not freestanding, facade signs and number facade signs. Turning to page 12, there are two freestanding signs existing on the site, and we'd like to request approval to have them be continued. Page, this is the Aaron sign, and that sign is located on, sort of on the corner of Industrial, it's located, this is the Industrial Drive and Terminal Road, I'm pointing to exhibit A2, and the sign is located at this corner and of that intersection. And the engineer has testified it's outside of the site triangle, it won't cause any disturbance in that area. That sign, the Aaron sign, is, well, let me just go back. A freestanding sign, one would be permitted on any property in that zone, so we have two, so we're asking for a variance for two. The code permits up to 100 square foot sign for a freestanding sign, sign that can be up to 15 feet in height, but it has to be set back 25 feet from the street line. So this Aaron sign, which is shown on page 12, that is 30.4 square feet in size, so they're permitted 100, it's 30. It's 9.3 feet in height, they're permitted up to 15, much less, but the setback is much closer to the, closer to the street line. It required, under the ordinance, a 25-foot setback would be required. And I've been out at the site, it's not, it does not block any views, there are, the building that you see in here, in this picture, that building did get, it's my understanding, that building got a variance to allow it to be set back beyond typically their setback 50 feet required. This is setback 27 feet. According to the resolution approving the variance, a 25-foot setback was required. So if you set back the sign, it may not be as visible. It's in a good location where it is, and it doesn't block the views, in my opinion. So that's the Aaron sign, 30 square feet. Also, this sign is much smaller, only 30 square feet, not 100 square feet. The larger your sign is, the further back you want to be set from the road. This is much smaller, so it can fit within that, within a closer location. The second existing sign is the Planned Parenthood sign, and that's shown on page 13. And that sign is eight square feet in size. They're allowed 100, it's only eight. It's less than six feet in height, five feet, 5.9 feet in height, so it's much shorter, smaller. It is located, however, within the street right of way, so it's not set back 25 feet. It's in fact set back in the, in the grassed area between the street line and the parking lot. And you can see behind it, there is a tree. What you don't see in front of it on this picture is, there is a utility pole very close to this sign. So its location works pretty well, given those two constraints and the, in this area, and it does not block any views, there's no sidewalk in this area to hamper its movement. So we would like to request that the board allow this site to be continued in place as well. So those are the sign variances. There is a variance required for refuge storage area. Two are proposed, one as noted by the engineer, our engineer. There is a refuge, there is existing dumpsters or containers along Industrial, along Terminal Road on the, on the south side of the furthest driveway, it's right here, and that's where a enclosure will be built. The enclosure proposed is a six-foot-high chain link fence with a double gate and solid slats, a green slats to screen the two dumpsters within this, dumpster containers within this enclosure. There also is an enclosure proposed for the Planned Parenthood parking lot, and that was discussed by our engineer as well. It's again the same construction, and if you recall, the photo on page, I think it will be a much more attractive condition than currently where the dumpsters are just out in the open, and that's shown on page eight. So the variance would be, it's not screened by a wall, we have a fence with green slats, and there's no landscaping proposed to screen it. Here we're putting the dumpsters in an existing concrete lot, and it's really, to tear up the concrete, put in evergreen landscaping that likely will not survive, given the traffic, does not seem like a good idea. This would be a more, better for the location to have this kind of screening, and it will be improvement over existing conditions. So those are the proposed variances. There are some non-conforming conditions that I should mention, just to have them for the record. Maximum building coverage, 35% is permitted, 38.8% is existing, it's an existing condition, we're not changing it. Same thing for impervious coverage, 85% is permitted, 91.7% is existing, and again, existing condition. Front yard setback, in the, on the plan, it shows that a variance would be required, but we received from the planning director, copy of a resolution that stated that a variance was granted by the, I guess, the planning board in 1988, that permitted a 25-foot setback variance. So that variance is not required, although it is stated on the plan. And then there's a side yard setback, that's an existing condition for the building, this building is, which abuts the waste management transfer facility, and that's, 25 foot is permitted, and it's 14.8 foot existing, so that's existing condition. So just to conclude, I would like to talk about the proofs that I need to give you to prove, hopefully, these variances. I would say this falls under a C2 variance, a flexible C. We're really looking at design standards, not bulk standards, but design standards for your, for the awning, for the signs, for the, for the trash receptacle screening areas. So the, that variance is appropriate, and I have to give you proofs. So first of all, benefits of this deviation. I think they'll provide aesthetic improvements, they'll aid the public in wayfinding for three separate businesses, some of which don't really have signage on them at all, and there were some signs on the fencing which will, which will be removed that tried to direct people to the right business, so that won't be needed anymore. The signs are really promoting the brand of the business, and it really meets the purpose of your I-2 zone, which is to preserve, which is to provide for the expansion and prefer, preserve the integrity of existing industrial uses. It would help support this business. The two freestanding signs are separate uses. The total size of those signs nowhere meets the maximum permitted of 100 square feet, so I think the reduced setback can be accommodated appropriately. And in terms of the second proof, which is the benefits of the deviation, well, that was, I talked about the benefits for the signs and the awnings, the refuge areas, again, it's really to screen and provide aesthetic improvements. The purposes of zoning have to be discussed in terms of a C variance, and I think it meets at least two purposes of zoning. For NJSA 40:55D to A, the first one, to guide appropriate use in the development of all lands, which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. I think it's doing that, certainly providing more attractive appearance and wayfinding. And 40:55D dash two I, which is probably the most important proof or purpose for this particular application, to promote a desirable visual environment, and they are upgrading this facility. The variances proposed, I feel, can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. It does not impact the neighborhood or adjacent properties, in fact, it makes it a much more, will make it a more attractive property, and will not cause substantial detriment to the public good. And the last proof talks about impairment of the purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. So again, I would state it's not consistent with the purpose of your I-2 zone plan to provide for the expansion and preservation of the integrity of existing industrial uses. It supports three business uses on a site, which requires identification, and also its corner location merits, I think, special consideration having two facade frontages. Are there any questions?
Well, thank you very much, Shipton. Certainly, no further questions at this time.
I just wanted to thank you for your presentation. I agree with all of your arguments, and the site is a bit confusing now. I think these signs are visually, they're aesthetically pleasing. The direction will certainly help customers on the site, so they're functional as well. And I think the new branding is going to be nice, too.
Thank you.
Can the board approve the retention of a sign located within a right-of-way rather than on the site and property?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was going to bring up that issue. I'm not sure that the board has the ability to grant approval or a variance for a sign that's near or useful right-of-way. It would be something, you know, you have the authority to, if a variance is on your property where this is a setback, but essentially, you know, if something goes in the right-of-way, it needs to be approved by the city council or some other authority, so.
Would you give a recommendation? How's that work?
I think, I mean, you could certainly do that. I think essentially, you're essentially powerless to do anything about that sign. It's really, the city council's got to deal with it one way or another. If you want to give them some information, you can, but, you know, however you want to achieve it, but I don't think you could grant variance for that.
Mr. Chairman, we have no further witnesses at this time. Obviously, any more witnesses that have spoken to the party, if you are here, the board, the public, if there's any further questions, or your professionals.
Any comments from the public? Any more discussion? The motion?
Most are broken.
Seven.
Seven.
Second?
Seconded.
We'll just make sure the resolution reflects that the right of way signage is not within our jurisdiction.
It will not address the Planned Parenthood, but will specifically permit the Planned Parenthood sign.
Yes, thank you. You want to check? Suzanne London?
Yes.
Christela Tella?
Yes.
Ryan Berger?
Yes.
Jordan Menoah Castaneda?
Yes.
Bob Arica?
Yes.
Jeff Bronck?
Yes.
Thank you very much, we can appreciate anyone coming out this night, for calling the city council's resolution, moving forward. Have a great night, thanks.